... High School. So if you'll step out and invite please stand to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the real power of our precious space, what a nation and where we're about in this school and liberty.
Yay!
May I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'll make that there.
Mr. Yeager for the motion, may I have a second? Mr. Dupree, I'll thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cook.
So we've got the Superior Title Awards up first, and a student from each school each month. Sponsored by our local Dairy Queen, so not only do they get recognized at the board meeting, you get a nice framed plaque here, but tomorrow that school will bring them and recognize them as one of our classmates as the Superior Title Award winner for the month. And the month of the central winners, they had perfect attendance during the month with snow member actually last month. They completed all their homework assignments and tests. They had passed all their grades, no discipline issues. They demonstrated great leadership skills, and they exhibited a winning attitude and spirit toward learning and appearance. So first up is the second grader from our elementary school, Anson Preston. So congratulations, Anson. Next up is from our media school, so the Superior Title Award goes to third grader Aiden Sims. The next Superior Title Award winner is from King Middle School, and seventh grader Grace Stratt. Like I said earlier, the high school recipient, I've gotten, it's been a pleasure to get to know him because he's a member of the superintendent advisory council. We've had some great meetings, he had a lot of great input on that community, but I enjoy getting to know him. That's twelfth grader Nathan Simpson. So the best part again, I'll bring you your Dairy Queen free blizzard around the school tomorrow. So congratulations to all four of you. This is another student recognition we have tonight, and I'm really excited about these two, four students, two classifications here, as they excel in what they love to do. And not only have they excel locally, but around the state of Kentucky, so all these are All-State. So the first thing, first ones we have are two All-State choir. That's KDA, they were named to the All-State Choir for that. And those are Selena, Aralou, and Parker Phillips. Congratulations to our two All-State choir members. Next up is the KDA All-State Band, our marching band had a great year this year, and these two were named to the All-State Band. And that's Emily Kurtzinger, she's a junior at the high school, and she's eighteenth chair flute in the concert band. So congratulations to Emily. Then the second All-State member is a senior, and they made second chair of the alto sax in the symphonic band, and that's Nicholas Rollin. So congratulations to you both on your All-State selections. And at this time, you all can, are welcome to stay and watch this whole meeting, but usually they go back in and take a picture. There's a nice background backdrop, and so everybody got, receives something here will go back and take a picture. And you all are free to leave, but like I said, you're welcome to stay if you'd like to.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue to move on. There is no sign up for public participation this evening, so we will move on. Mr. Cook, over to superintendent.
It's good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to welcome Dr. Fred Carter-Hirst in the front row. He's my superintendent mentor, he's over my two superintendent training. He keeps me out of trouble my first year as a new superintendent, so I thank you for joining us tonight and welcome to Mercer County. So I've always said, what makes a great school system is if you can be great in this triangle of these three, that I always call it, that's the academics, the arts, and the athletics. So I wanted to hit on all three of those to show some things that Mercer County has been doing really good at right now. And first up is our high ready winner results that we had from, you know, we did one testing in the fall, and now we compare to the winter, and I asked Mr. McAllister, he's going to go over these results with us. But it was really exciting. We tested kindergarten, first grade, all the way through eighth grade, and math, reading. But what was really, really exciting was to look at these winter results and to see it, every subject went reading in math. Kindergarten, grade, grade, all of them had significant increases. So we were really excited about that. We were able to go to the staff meeting, then to add the middle school and intermediate. We're going to hit the elementary on January fourth, and then we come back just to tell them thank you for all the hard work, the grind as well. We've asked them to cover classes and do things that they've never done before. What they did was they continued to push our kids each and every day this first semester. And that hard work paid off by the high ready results that Mr. McAllister was going to share with us.
That's kind of that benchmark that we set out there. We'd like to have fewer than 10%, no more than 10% novice in any subject area. Again, we, we want to have zero, but that's our mark that we look for. And we want to have no less than 75% of our kids achieving, achieving growth in a year. So the, the, the universe, the screener that we take, the assessment that we take, it will gauge on those things. And it predicts, it takes each kid, predicts out at half a foot years growth for where that kid is, what grade level they are, how old they are, and it's very personalized. And then, you know, we want 75% plus percent of our kids to meet that, meet that growth goal. So those are lofty goals, we know that, and we've been talking about that to the principals and teachers for a year. So yeah, this was a great data point for us. What ultimately we wanted to do was we want to see the kids that are high achieving, those percentages grow. For the kids that are struggling in some areas, we want to see those reduced at every day. So this data, this data is for K, K through A. We're working to some things at the high school and ironing out what we're going to use for our, we're trying some different things there. And so, but this, this indicator was for K. Out of all nine of those grades, all nine of those percentage proficient distinguishing English, English language arts went up every single grade. Of those nine grades, all nine grades, their percentage of proficient distinguishing math went up. Out of all nine of those grades, eight of the nine in reading and all nine in math reduced their, their number of novice kids. That, that's pretty exceptional to have them all, virtually all move in the direction that we want them to move. As a district, our percentage of proficient distinguishing both of those subjects went up from, you see, it went up from 28% to 40%. Went from 12% to 24, so we doubled that in math. And then as a district, our percentage of students scoring novice in language arts and math went down from 52 to 40 in language arts and 61 to 44. So, and again, you see down there, we had of those nine grades, we had over four classes that scored 60% or higher in growth, grade levels, I'm sorry, scored 60% higher in growth in language arts. And then we had four grades that had over 70% growth in math. Again, those are exceptional numbers. We were, we were super pleased with those, those results. Because again, like we, we talked about, we have goals out there, and we want to start making momentum every single day of, every single day. And so this is the, that's the momentum that we want to see. So our schools, our principals, and our teachers, and our staff has worked on this stuff, has worked extremely hard. This was, this was a best case scenario for our mid-year return to what we feel like is a, you know, a pretty solid, normal school year for them. This is exactly what we want to see. It's not where we want to be all along, but we know that, but we, it's a great first step. And it took a huge effort for, for, you know, our school staff to get to this point.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Now, Ms. Johnson and Ms. O'Dell and Mr. Price, he's administrator of law game tonight. I know two of those three here are here, and I just want to say hats off to them. And I told the faculty at the middle school and the intermediate staff, and I said, our administrators are going to push you, you're going to push the students, and in turn you get results like this right here. So all that hard work and dedication has really paid off. And we challenge them for next semester to have even more growth than when we did the first semester. Thank you, Coach Flit. Well, that great news for our district. The LBC, little plan of the meeting, we had our third, fourth, and I believe fifth meeting. We finally got the rough draft that we're going to send to KDE for approval. So they're supposed to have that back by January third. And two weeks later, our board meeting, if it's all clear that they're going to do that for your all's approval, then that district facility plan will be presented to you all for approval. And that included, in that rough draft, send to KDE is the new elementary to be restructured. It will be first through fifth grade on a new, built on a new site with the intermediate. The current intermediate becoming the preschool, kindergarten, like an early learning center. And then we can move at the central office over there as well. Our central office right now doesn't have all of our central office employees just because of size and space and location. But we would be able to move like your, your food service, your technology, your transportation department, maintenance director. All of those different departments could finally be under one roof at the intermediate. So that would be a great situation for central office as well. But what's best for it is those first through fifth graders in Mercer County would get a state-of-the-art new facility. And then later down the road, the next building project would be the middle school. And the sixty acre would get a state-of-the-art middle school. So those are exciting announcements that we look forward to looking into further, especially we hear back from KDE and they approved it, of course you all, it goes in front of you all for approval. But that's, that was the rough draft that was sent to KDE two weeks ago. So that's academics and some buildings, facilities, things. So the arts, we had four All-Staters tonight that we, we recognize, but our middle, middle school and high school bands, our choir, they had their winter concerts, Christmas concerts the last couple of weeks, and they did a tremendous job. And our arts are really, really something to be proud of here in Mercer County in all those areas. And thanks to the board, we're going to help the band purchase a trailer, covered trailer that's been by trucks that have been already dry, a box trailer, box trailer. And that enclosed trailer is going to allow the marching band to take all their equipment to these night meetings, on Saturdays to their competitions, but they're going to have that wrapped. So it'll be nice, have all of those nice logos and all the championships they've won in the past. And so we'll go build and have some sponsorship and give us a way to make some money for them, for their boosters. So for our arts, look forward to that. There'll be, there'll be a new trailer on the way up here shortly, hopefully for them. Athletics, I know our architects are here tonight, you'll hear from them a little later. About an all overdue baseball, softball, golf, and soccer project, and we'll talk about that. This will allow us to compete with surrounding school districts, really with school districts around the state of Kentucky, which is important in the times that we live in because of basketball five sixty-three coming down. So I'm looking forward to listening to them a little later. And it'll allow us also to remove the orange polo poggies from all the sports athletics events up on our campuses. So I'm really looking forward to hearing about that. But that's athletics, things that we're looking at here later on the season. Congratulations, I love winning championships, of course. And congratulations to our girls' basketball team, I'm sure we'll have them in here next month for winning the class double A section championship Saturday night over at Ducks McCaffrey against Boyle County. And they move on to the state tournament, it's in Owensboro, I think it's the middle of January. So we'll be here in about a month. We'll go down to Owensboro and root them on, hopefully. We'd love to win a state championship here in a month, so that'd be great. We wish them the best of luck. The COVID nineteen update, I sent this to the staff just a few minutes ago, and we'll send this out to our community. I always do an update for monthly, stakeholder update on our COVID nineteen numbers. Of course, the first thirty-seven calendar days with required masking, we had 139 positive cases for a 3.8 average positive case per day with a required mask. Since then, there's been eighty calendar days, which excludes the twelve fall break days that I never put in there. We've had 118 positive COVID nineteen cases since then, the last eighty days. And that reduces us down to 1.5 average positive cases per day. So with required masking, we had 3.8. With our optional masking test estate program, those two put together, we went from 3.8 down to 1.5. So hats off to our faculty and staff and students for doing a great job. But that shows you that Mercer County, what we're doing is successful. And we're combining a test estate program with an optional mask policy. And it's proving that what we're doing is working. So like I said, hats off to all those that are involved in that and being able to make us, you know, one of our goals, we talked about this back in August, one of our goals this first semester is let's try to get through the first semester and not have to take one NTI day or go to, you know, go home and not be able to come to school because of COVID. And we were able to get through the whole semester without having to take one NTI day or anything. So that's been great, because we all know in-person learning is the best for kids, and we've made it. I said this is part two, we're going to take four steps this year. It's up till, up till fall break and then until Christmas, and I'm going to try to make it to spring break. Winter may have something to do with that, the weather, and they've closed out the school here in the fourth of July. So that's the COVID nineteen update. This is some exciting news. Perry Harbar, transportation director, he reported for the first time in over five years, we finally have a full staff of bus drivers. And over a problem with it in all the districts in the state of Kentucky that's fully staffed on their transportation program right now. So that is great news, that is all we've heard this first semester, so how many people can't find bus drivers? So that was great news here from Perry Harbar, he's done a great job. Remember, he just started this position this, this summer, and so that is great news from him. The superintendent advisory council met last Thursday for their December meeting. They had, they had a lot of great ideas. Remember, we do classify them, right? The students are at lunchtime, and the teachers are after school. And we've had some great ideas and discussions thrown out about the future of Mercer County schools. And I really enjoyed getting to know all those groups and just the exciting things that they have, you know, that I hear from them to learn about our school district. Had a great meeting with Kim King, one of our representatives yesterday, or day four yesterday, about the upcoming general session. We talked about a lot of things with education, trying to get fully funded, transportation, kindergarten, and various things, and seed funding, trying to get what we really need after inflation over the last few years. So we had some really good discussion with her going into the general session that starts in January. Tomorrow is an early release date for our students. We need to make sure we put a reminder out this evening about that, and the students will be off at 1:30 tomorrow. And then after spring break, I'd like to really look involved, not just the board and our staff and students, but the whole community. And I want to put together and develop with our whole community involved, a mission, a vision, and a brand. And you know, a lot of school districts, a lot of colleges, brand, there's colleges on that. But I really think it would be our next step for Mercer County schools with developing a great mission, vision statement, a great logo, a brand, something that we can start the next school year off with. So I think we'll be looking at that after spring break. There's a lot of great things coming to Mercer County schools that we talked about. I'm excited about some building projects that we'll hear about tonight. And the LBC, the district facility plan, if you all get the hope of that, for your all's approval. Going over, it's an exciting time, there's a lot of great things going on here. And I just appreciate each and every day that I get to come and work and be the superintendent of Mercer County schools.
All right, any questions? Thank you, sir. Good report. Finance officer's report, Ms. Minor.
Not that tall, sorry. We have our ending general fund cash balance for the month of November was 7.4 million as opposed to 7.1 last November. So that's pretty good. Of course, that jumped significantly from our cash balance from last month, which was in the 3 million mark because of tax collection. And so all those property tax collections that come in and all that always happen in like October and November for the most part. And then we see some still happening in December and into the spring. But that is the biggest reason that that has jumped up there. Our overall revenue was 10.16% higher as opposed to last November, and that includes the beginning balance. The receipts received in the year are up in very minimal, I hate to dig, but 0.79% compared to the prior year at the same time. So as far as the revenue that's actually coming in this year for property taxes and everything, it's relatively the same at this moment. That will increase over time as well. Our expenses currently are at 11% compared to prior year. And again, that's still partially COVID, but COVID can recoup some expenses back last December to, like, to grant that was originally allocated to the seed funds, and our seed was reduced by $600,000. Our expenses in the month of November were 1.69 million, which is right around where they should be. It's a little bit lower than last month, about $25,000 lower than last month. Tonight, our auditor is here to present our audit report, so I'm not going to be long-winded tonight on this one. And then in January, we will look at the draft budget, and we will review that by the end of the month. And you will also get pretty staffing guidelines. And then we're also going to start looking at our contracts and renewals and that kind of thing. Normally, in the month of January, I don't bring much of that to you all unless we are looking to bid out some of those contract services. And then that normally starts happening January than January of March. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First number one, everybody to look at, if I have any questions for Chantel. Chantel, do you have anything to present?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Do you have anything to present?
Uh, no, I just, if you have any questions, just if you could review what you have brought here.
Looks good. Two questions for you. On a report.
I picked on some of your side, and they were teasing me and said, you did three minutes or less. And I said, no, I love that question.
We didn't have the time.
I will try to, to, I will not go over every page of this report that you have, or we would be taking a long time. And that could be good for video for you guys. I first want to start and say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here. I don't take that statement lightly. I do consider it a privilege to be able to do the work that a neighbor that our neighbor does. And I just genuinely appreciate that, and anything, so thank you. I'm going to start on what is the physical page four, but it's page one of the actual report. That is, it's got a title of the independent auditors report at the top. And just want to let you know that you have an unmodified opinion on your audit, on your financial audit for the year ended June 30, 2021. I'll briefly say that when I say last year, forgive me, sometimes I mean 2020. And we're already in fiscal year 2022, of course, when the numbers that I will mention are of fiscal year 21. So if you, if I say something, and you're like, I thought we spent more on that, I thought we done something. Sometimes it's just simply that it's happened since July 1 of 2021, so it's five or six month period leading up to, up to today compared to the numbers that you're looking at. But again, you have an unmodified report, you're saying, what's that mean? That's, that's the good one, that's the clean opinion that you want to have, so that's a good thing. So there's nothing to go over there, since it's a good one. I'm going to have you, if you look at pages four through 10 only. Yes. That is main witness discussion and analysis. And Ms. Minor puts this together after she gets the draft and we all have the report. But I always like to point this out to the board because it's the click notes version of the numbers for the year, if you will. And it's typically an easy format to look at because it gives you a good comparison between 2021 and 2020 for those fiscal years, and it makes a good summation, so if you need a quick, if you need the quick read, it's a good place that it's in post. I am going to have you look to page 11. And if any of you have questions, if I go over some, then feel free to interrupt, but it's not bothering anyone. So have you looked, this is your statement of net position, or most county folks would call that a balance sheet in common terms. If you look at the, the numbers I'm going to give you here, if you look at the total column, you see there that you've got total current assets as of June 30, 2021, and 8.4 million dollars. Of that 6.8 million, really 6.9 million was cash, which was up 1.82 million dollars from the year ended June 30, 2020. So huge increase. As you come on down, you've got noncurrent assets, and you look at them, so what's that? Is your, your land, your buildings, your buses, net of accumulated depreciation. It's like, what's that? That is your essentially an estimate of how much of those assets and how much of that cost you've used up over time through June 30 and 2021. So at June 30, you had a debt of 49.78 million dollars in assets, in long-term assets there. Down 9 million dollars around the year ended June 30, 2020 because of that depreciation expense. So, and that's just a change of, again, using up those assets over time. Okay. So total assets in the burnt out flows of 62.8 million dollars. Come on down to your current liabilities, and those were about 3.7 million, which is up a couple hundred thousand from the year before. In these terms, it's not a huge, huge difference by any means. And then we're going to come on down and talk about one more number on this page, which is your noncurrent liabilities. And this includes your debt and your bonds on your buildings and your capital leases here, which is some copiers, but primarily buses. And that was down about 1.4 million dollars. A lot of that maybe is your annual debt payments, annual debt service payments being paid by the district. the district and reducing that debt. So, all right, we're going to look now at page 12. I'm going to turn right aside, please, please. A latency play out, if you will. And this is your statement of activities or income statement on the government line basis. It does include your depreciation expense. And your total expenses were $35.9 million for the year ended June 30th, 2021. That was up about $662,000 from the year before, okay? But with that increase in expense, it was more than offset by your increase in revenue because your revenues were up $2.35 million. And so you end up with a change in that position or most folks would commonly refer to that as profit of $2.7 million from the year ended June 30th, 2021. So it's a very, very strong financial year for the district. One thing I did want to mention while I'm here is that your loss food service excelled in the year ended June 30th, 2021. Your food service director, food service department and the board's interest on feeding kids in the community does not look like those in these numbers because your food service revenue was up almost $80,000. And yes, the summer feeding rate was higher, but you don't see that kind of increase without seeing an increase in the dinner meals served. And that was, yes, you saw some additional expense for doing that, but that revenue far and above it seemed to that expense. So hats off to the food service here. All right. Page 13, we're not going to talk a whole lot about, but one thing, when you, when you get this audit report, that you'll probably notice is that the numbers that I just gave you on those first couple pages don't exactly look like the numbers that Ms. Minor gives you in her, in her monthly report. And that's because your bonds and your fixed assets and those things aren't in need of, but those statements are still a part of your financial statements here and part of the audit report. So the balance sheet on page 13 and then the income statement that's on page 15 are the statements that more closely are used and that literally you can take those balance sheets and AFRs and those monthly financials and if you wanted to, and I'm sure that you don't, but if you wanted to, literally go line by line and essentially match. Okay? So the point of that being just to let you know that those numbers do go together. And then if you're one of the nerdy county folks, you can look at the reconciliation on page 14 and 16 that basically lets you know that those numbers do in fact go together and what the pluses and minuses are and stuff to get to those. I don't want to spend much time on those. I'm happy to answer the questions that you have about them, but I do want to have you look at page 15 just briefly. Because this has your general fund, income statement's got other funds and stuff too, but the number we'll look at is your general fund because you had a positive increase in your general fund balance of $1.3 million for the year ended June 30th, 2021. There are several factors to that, but that is a, again, a substantial increase and should not go unnoticed. Some of this is generally COVID related with kids not being in the buildings, things like electricity costs are down, you know, significantly didn't have as many bus routes and your repairs on your buses and your diesel fuel costs are down. So that's some of that, but some of that is also just good financial planning and stewardship that's increasing the general balance. All right. Now, bear with me for just a second because we're going to skip a whole bunch of pages. And I'm going to have you flip to page 70, all the way back to 76, which the first page that you will have does not have a page number on it. And that physical copy of 76 is on the second page because it's a, it's a two-parter, if you will. Amber, it'll be about 81 or so on that page. Thank you. This is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So this is your, the amount of federal money that the district expended during the year ended June 30th, 2021. And so as a part of the audit, one thing that we do is look at compliance and we look at internal controls specific to federal awards. And there are certain criteria that say, that basically help us determine which of the federal awards get looked at in a more closely. For this year, there are two programs involved. One, the ESER, which includes year because that's the same CFA number for our purposes, okay? And the other one is the coronavirus relief program, also called that C replacement money that Amber even mentioned in her financial report because some of that is the timing of when that came, which was about this time last year. So your total federal expenditures for the year ended June 30th, 2021, $6.5 million of about $3.2 million from the year before. And so how do we get up $3.2 million? Well, you had almost 1.3 in ESER a year expended. You had $622,000 of this coronavirus relief in last mile internet. And then you had roughly a million dollar increase in your food service revenue because your food service revenues are substantially favorable, not 100% favorable, but it's a very high percentage that is, that is actually favorable. All right. We are going to flip just a couple pages to page 78. And got to talk to Mr. Booger and Amber a few minutes before tonight's meeting and go over a few things. And I told Mr. Booger that this was a good page to talk about because this year it's boring page because this is your schedule of findings and question calls. And you, for Mercer County, we had no findings or question calls that we found. So you want this to be a boring page and that's a good thing. So the, in section two and section three, I say that those four words of the page are no matters were recorded because we didn't have any findings. So make sure that you guys are aware that there were not any, any significant findings. The last couple of things I want to talk about, I'm just going to summarize for you. There are two more reports. One starts on page 80, the other is on page 82, okay? And these are our reports on government auditing standards and also internal control and compliance by the uniform guidance that's on your federal awards, okay? And if we had some of those findings that I just mentioned on that page, this report also gets modified to talk about those findings typically. And you, it basically draws even further attention to the back of the report. It was a binding. It had those. We don't have those, so these are also the unmodified or clean, clean reports for those criteria as well. And then the last thing that I'll talk about is the letter to you as the board directors that's on page 86. And one of the things with an audit is that when we get to end, we are supposed to notify you guys if we had any trouble with not, if we encountered any difficulties with management, whether that be Mr. Booger, whether that be Ms. Minor, whether that be, you know, significant trouble with one of the SAG members that we just couldn't get information or couldn't, couldn't come up with anything or we weren't getting adequate responses or whatever the case might be, we're supposed to let you know that. And I'm always enjoying coming to Mercer County. I've been working on this audit a few years. This is the first time that I've presented, but we don't have any of those things here. I'm sure that I'm not Amber's favorite person to say show up, but we have a good working relationship. The SAG here's done a great job of getting us information, getting us timely information, getting us answers to what we need and all that. And so I just want to make sure that you know that and know that that letter is, is the typical language that it would be for a clean opinion. And I also want to brag on SAG a little bit because it's a, it's a great place to come work on an audit or something that sometimes can be uncomfortable for folks. That's all I've got, folks. Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to add that is thank you for all that you do. I know when you sit in there with all those stacks of papers and for hours of time, I don't think I could do that for a living. But anyways, thank you for what you do, but it also shows our district is doing what's right. And a lot of hats off to Amber Minor, she's a great finance director for us and she does a tremendous job keeping everything straight, keeping us out of the newspaper on front page. No, it's great news here that at the back of this report that there's no findings whatsoever. And that's great news for Mercer County.
If you all join me in for breakfast and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda items. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All right. All right.
Mr. Prue, motion may have a second. Second, all in favor? Okay, right now we need to enter into executive session. So may I please have a motion to enter this executive session, please?
I make a motion.
Mr. Prue, can I have a motion, may I have a second? Ms. Racheski, all in favor?
That's weird. That is really weird. You know, Joe Teney is, he used to be super intelligent. Joe's wedding picture showed up in Hidden City. Of course, Joe's house was over in Hidden City. And his wedding picture, it didn't have a parking lot, it just was laying, that's it, the car that's laying on the, on the windshield. It's just, it was written on the back, so she called it and they got your wedding for you. Just crazy. Down in the back pass, there was a car, it's still parked there. And a two or four went through one door and out the other door, it's still sticking through there. Windows, windshield's broken out of everything, no other damage, just a two or four through it. Power outlet. There's a guy in Jerry Bush, he was still renting, just like your, your classrooms. Johnston, this was his company, Johnston, Jerry Bush. And I went over to Jerry's Sunday afternoon to have to leave furniture out. Of course, his home was gone. And it's litter, a tree that come down and just split its big screen TV in the middle and another tree come down, split its couch in the middle. But he had a white, ran in, set it over corner. All gone. And then somebody just came all pieces. And then Monday I went, there's a guy who's, it's there to be in front of church, I go to St. Street, that's his house. He's there with people last time. I remember one house that this church was along the path. Only the second floor, his office is on the second floor. And the roof's totally gone. There was a tree down, parts, parcel in the office and debris in there and everything. But his desk had nothing at all, like between that little sign, paperclip sitting on it. There were just sign, paperclip, which is like his level. His son was upstairs and he and his wife downstairs and he heard, heard a grudge. And so he screamed at his son down downstairs, his wife actually started up the stairs to get his son. Just as she started up the stairs, the wind was downstairs, it all blew out and the wind rushed and carried her all the way up the stairs. It was dropped on the floor. The son, since I started up the stairs, I thought my son was gone. I thought she might be too. He went and found both of her on the floor. She was really almost unconscious in her arms. They got down the stairs and then they went next door. Their next door neighbor was Chris and I don't know if you've heard him, but he's just retired from the South High School. My students are all these years. Chris was next door. He says, he got up to the top of stairs, he saw their both, okay. And he said, you guys went down the stairs. And he said, I looked and it didn't have a roof. So he said, I looked over towards Chris's house and Chris was looking out. And he said, come over guys, let's go to the basement. So he said, we ran down the stairs and ran next door and got Chris's basement. He said, we sat there and all of a sudden the ceiling tile started just dropping in. And Chris said, all this stuff's coming down, we gotta get out of here. They went out, went across the street to the third house and then the roof started falling in all dead. So they went to four houses, right in the safe place. And these guys across the street, I don't know, and put Chris's lady, this is how she gets to her. But they heard it, they ran across the street from this guy and they had one of their house. And took his roof off and got his car, so they were outside except him and one car inside the garage and it was still okay. But he thought, boy, we still had our money for, he has small kids, so here we go. Here's how smart people are, generators, they put a generator in his garage. And they were sleeping, three in the morning. He said, he woke up and he was rocking, he couldn't hardly see, man, couldn't hardly check on his wife. And he didn't wake his wife. He called the medicine, they were all about, calling the medicine. The medicine center said, yeah, carbon dioxide poisoning was there. Worst thing they had to do, eat their own ass, their generator, sad, it was fractured. It's been crazy. It's, it's like, it's hard to miss. Sitting back, James always goes, take a guess. I do. There's a table, most of the parts are bolder. We see log trucks pulling down. Over this house. Just, or just the logs for the boulder. It's just crazy. Just stay on the young house. This person likes to call it medical. Fed or something, it's only a store that registers. It's historic houses, two stories. It's U G. Just got a microphone and sold it. So it was optioned to reinforce. And as they produce it around the spot, he's been providing it. With the victory, painted on the outside by Trevor. It's just great. Hotel, make a gig. We start out. Roll topsy. It's just starting to go down. Yeah. Well, that's, that's a lot of transport lost in every factor. Transport is a whole day. Two of the eight are totally left. They're just left on the grid. The others, every part's missing. What I was thinking was that's about every level factors is probably two thousand more. Everybody having a job here in Christmas, my cousins. Bicycle good, they're paying jobs, pulling Christmas and also. And the other part is that purpose was why it happened. That's a lot of possible families and businesses that they made boulder and all of them. Oh, right. We're seeing possible. And that don't come in, it's not possible. He said, all of them. My own, come through channels. Tire repair shops and things like that. Hidden spaces. Property owners themselves are up there. They're going to find, they change businesses or something. They're just trying to get started, see if they're starting to change. So just wipe down. Start. Eight sections of trucks. She's been playing music, it was a lot of others. Very much quality. Standing around, sitting, big houses. Seeing the room. They got to talk about some of the better hotels, the all great estate. Houses are places to live. So there's been a lot of interest in the real interest in houses sometimes. You go to the strip, it's a lights and houses. So after about four or five, it's maybe over here, there's no hoppers in there. Because you can't see what you're building with all the trees down. I like the one, there are many as well. It's a big, dangerous, dark. Please don't name earth or water. And anybody wants to do it, they will have to leave the house. And I don't want to test it with a power. Hate that because you think, think that to somebody else's. Yeah, that's worship. Yeah. So. Well, that one street, that one dance, I'm working for still have. We've actually. Then there were three kids. And this one is for her, her kids. And that's all the qualities that they're playing. Got their, their biggest issue.
Okay, may I please have a motion to exit executive session?
I make that.
Okay, Mr. Gager with the motion, may I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Emery, all in favor? There is no action related to executive session. So we will move on and we will talk next about the committee.
And we're going to review this calendar. And we really want to focus on three types of happy days that are scheduled before spring break. That are type academy slash makeup days. And the committee had some concerns about having those designated as makeup slash type academy days. And one, this being uncertainty was causing the calendar itself. And then two, it's making it difficult to set up the type academy. And you can get those, kind of get that scheduled. For example, there's questions if we had two makeup days, what would we do with the third day? Would we go on a type of type academy day? So there's just an uncertainty. And so the committee is, in order to address that, the committee is asking that the board consider taking March 30th, the 30th first and April first, and just making them regular instructional days. And moving the makeup days into the school year, which would make the last day for students, May 23rd. And that is an early release day. And then type academy days can be moved to the summer session. So we've discussed that if anyone's already had arrangements, which hopefully they knew not to because they want makeup days. But if they did, then they could use DHOs to still participate in. And those would be excuse absences. And so that was the recommendation that they wanted to share with you all to see if you would consider updating the calendar for this school year.
Questions? If there are no further questions, can I please have a motion to approve the calendar committee update?
Mr. Williams, is that your recommendation?
Yes, I think it'd be much better to plan, not, you know, keeping a limbo of what the type academy days, like you said, would be very hard to plan. Because you could have snow down here, that month or two, full of stacks, you know. Throw all those planes out. So I think that's the best.
Can I make a motion for the recommendation?
Mr. Gager makes a motion, a little seconds. A little seconds, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next is football, soccer, press box addition renovation projects. Folks will mouse to hear our attempts.
Hello, I'm Chad Bauer with Ross Tarn Architects.
I'm waiting also for Ross Tarn Architects.
And we're actually going to present on both the baseball, soccer, golf, or softball, golf complex and the soccer together as one presentation. And so we'll go through this and then have any questions that you have. So first is the baseball, softball, golf complex. I want to start with going through the existing conditions. Currently, it's actually just a softball and golf complex where the golf hits diagonal down the driving range and the softball field is there by itself. There is no baseball field connected to it. There's also no pellet restroom. So earlier, we certainly mentioned that there are orange porta potties. And that's just part of the current existing conditions. We have had some discussions just about what could be a possibility here to create a complex and improve those existing conditions. Keeping the golf and softball field, we can work in a baseball field. This would, the golf direction would have to change. So that would be hitting more perpendicular across, which would still work with the existing land that is not going downhill, it's still fairly flat, which would work well for a driving range. The baseball field would share a plaza back to back with the softball field. And the first base and third bases would be parallel. So there wouldn't be an angle to it. It would be parallel to each other and creating a plaza in between. A couple of things to note, that there would be separate press boxes and concession stands for baseball and for softball. There would be a dugout for the home team that would include a restroom. And then the, both fields would have a turf infield. And then the outfield would be grass. And so that's pointing out a couple of the items there.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are there bathrooms outside of the lawn from the outside of the dugout?
So let me show a plan here. So this is, and it's kind of hard to read in the circle. This is showing both the softball and baseball. The softball's on the left, baseball's on the right. The softball concessions on the first floor could house pellet restrooms. And that would be for both men and women, the pantry room in between. And then the baseball concessions on the first floor could have storage so that they're identical shapes and sizes. But just would have different programing needs. And that the pellet restrooms at the softball concessions building would serve both venues if they were in operation at the same time. This is the second floor plan, which would be a press box for each and it would be identical. And then we'll go back actually to the first floor and point out that the concessions, which will work for this here. And you can see, this is a pointer. But both press boxes and concessions would face behind home plate. So that the concessions windows, whoever is working in concessions would be able to look out onto the field. So if it's a parent, they would be able to still work concessions, but be able to see their child playing. And then directly above would be the press box also facing directly over home plate. So it's optimal views for both. We, get back to the site there. We, for a minute, had talked about maybe a combined press box and concessions that would work for both. But as you can tell here, the distance between the two fields would either create a super long building or an inefficient size or program that is not really needed would have to be created to fill the gap. It also would create weird circulation patterns to get to the third base at the baseball field and first base at the softball. So that was something that was talked about. But having separate press boxes where this particular layout does work well. So let me also show the two.
The, the press box area, is that, the press box is the only part that is to live?
Yes. Yes, so the, the first floor, the directly of the, so the stairs in the middle, the stair would go up to the press box that sits on top of concessions in both layouts. And the storage of baseball and the restrooms of softball are just one story with the roof left. And so that's where the sheen of roof is shown there.
So you just have, you have restrooms at the softball, but not at the baseball, right?
Right.
The storage of the baseball.
Can I add that the, to reduce costs, you have bathrooms in just the softball?
Right, yeah, that's what I was.
Where you add on secret storage, the title line represents the softball and baseball in the same square footage of your storage. And can you talk about the, where the, if you come to the concession stands, where you divide the, give us the home.
Yeah, so on there, each side has two windows so that you could have two different lines, one for home and one for visitors. And that particular layout that we're showing here would work to have separate lines versus everybody coming to one side or sitting side by side. So it's a good layout to keep it separated and keep the home and visitors apart. This is the dugouts. The visitor's dugout would just be a three sided dugout with a bench. The home dugout would include a single restroom and could be a changing room, team room highlighted. But it would, it would not be identical. The home team would include restroom, the visitors would find. Additionally, the softball, the home dugout would have a restroom included as well to match baseball. And we wanted to show some photos of a project in the area. This is George Walker Brothers Clark High School that has a very similar baseball and softball setup as to what we're presenting here. This is showing a turf infield with a concessions press box that faces home plate. So parents working in the concessions have a view out onto the field. There's a concessions window on one side, there's one on the other side, which would be for the home team. And then the press box is up over the field as well.
Can you tell us about, have the boosters, where you go back, tell them about those seats across the road?
Yes, and so if there's a space in between the press box and the backstop, there could be some VIP seats that could be sold, used for a booster, in fundraising or something. And that could be a celebrated special spot, which is something that they do here at this school.
So, so the windows of the concession stand are up against the fence of the backstop there?
Against the.
I was against it, but there's a.
Just a walkway in between. But, but the actual concessions pass-throughs are on the each end of.
Yeah, but the red door, they're going to shut, that's the concessions door, the upper deck.
That keeps your lines locked, yeah. You know, behind the blade and the queue for the, for the area to support the.
I've been to this field, well, baseball, softball. And I was subtle, enamored with it. I took videos. And I like how it's, like where the sidewalk is, is raised up. So you don't have to sit behind the fence near the very, it's raised up. And the views wherever you're sitting, how the bullpens are, how the dugout to lay out. It's like the best field I've seen as far as high school school.
So there's a walkway in front of the walkway, right? Down to the field.
Yes. And similar rotations here at March 30th, the elevations that it could be a similar design.
Can you, can you talk to me about the distance between pellet restrooms and the baseball field? And if it's located at the softball field?
Yeah, so go back to the site there. So it's all in the same plaza. So we're pointing to the concessions with the same arrow to go. So it, it wouldn't be terribly far for baseball. But if you were on the home, which we're proposing home to be the third base on both, if you were at the home, you would have to go around the press box to the softball.
Probably eighty feet. So from home plate to first base on the baseball field is the same distance between the concession stands.
It's in the same complex, but to make it as efficient as possible.
Just, just wondering, are you, did you contemplate putting turf in the softball bullpens as well?
That's something to consider, so the same conditions. And that is not something that is in this particular plan, but certainly could be something added to it for practice and more to have the same plane. Um, for practice and more to have the same playing conditions would be good. And that is what the other, uh, the project, the photos that were shown, that is what they have. A couple more photos to show. This is the home, um, dugout for baseball and then.
You'll notice that we pulled the, uh, the dugouts back a little bit to improve the sidelines from the stands, cause that seems to be the biggest issue. Uh, a lot of people have, as they push the dugouts too close up on the plate, too far out, and then when you have the stands, you can't see.
Yeah, and our current softball field, you can't see left field from our stand.
Can you give a talk about how, how we talked about moving that?
Yeah, let me go back to the site plan as well.
For the softball, yeah.
So this is showing the existing, um, leechers moved south closer to the press box. Um, another idea is that if the home, um, dugout, wait, we're going to add restrooms, we could just rebuild it entirely so it's identical to baseball. And move it back so it's not blocking the view and then adjust the leechers as well to have the, you know, uninterrupted view of left field. But that, right now, we're sure that is an addition off the back, but it could be a very good one just to match.
It slides a little bit farther down the baseline, right now, and then you'll see that the outfield end of the dugout is even with first base and softball. We actually can slide it down to where first base is at the middle or the home plate end of, uh, of the dugout. So puts it a little farther away, which opens up that seating area that can really open your sidelines. But still puts your coaches entry right there on first base. Or third base, depending on which, which one we'd be wanting to use for the recovery. I think yours is third base, yours.
Third base.
Third base, yeah, right. So if we slide it farther, it'll play it more.
Would you add that the bullpen there?
Not much.
Yeah, you can add it. The, the bullpen needs to be closed off and the side entrance to the bullpen from the dugout. Oh, sorry. So, uh, folks off for a long time. Yeah. Lots of questions. Uh, how about, like I was, how is it, is it ending sufficient to?
That's, that's something we can talk about. We do go higher with the backstop poles, and we do the, we don't do the chain link, we do the screen. When you have a worry like this, pop-up fouls are going to be an issue for anybody. Typically, when you have games, there's a pop-up. Whoever's sitting there will yell heads up, baseball's got a hand going on, they're focused on their field. The options are, one, you can go in and we've done a higher net that is between the two to stop those. Uh, the other one is we've also done a seamless, like, fabric shade structure that you put over the stands. And anything that comes down, it's off that shade structure, it signs off.
I don't think I've seen softball maybe once or twice actually come close to the stands there, the baseball would dip.
How tall are those? Would, actually, the screens being made maybe that are on the baseball field?
Uh, you're going at least a few feet. Or a field goal.
Would these be on the same level, like, playing surface? Like softball field and, and the baseball field?
There would be a little bit of a difference in the plaza, everything's sort of in gray, all at the same level. But there are some stairs shown, um, to get down to the dugout for baseball on their base side. Uh, and the, the field would be, like I said in the picture, um, it would be similar to this where the baseball field is a little lower than the softball field. But the, all the sidewalk pavement you're having is the same.
Right, the top of that wall is about three feet above the, the playing field, right? But if you look on the, where the stands are, you're only about sixteen inches. And that's, that's good, and it does help increase your sideline to where you can see, you know, home plate from every seat.
I'm talking about the softball field and the baseball field.
Baseball would probably be a little bit lower than softball.
Okay, that's, I was thinking it probably wasn't a bit between the same, okay, I'm sorry.
No. Ask questions, that's what we're here for.
I can show some more photos of the GRC example, just to.
Does this include lighting as well?
Yes.
LED lighting?
Yes. Yeah, so this is the, the home visitor, or the home dugout, this is looking at the home plate.
The back, uh, you can see the backstop netting.
Yeah.
And the height of the backstop netting, uh, there are no columns, you'll see the column is actually back behind the press box, so you don't have to worry about the, the columns being in the way.
Yeah, they're coming off of the lights down, but he has.
Well, it's coming off of the support column. The height up there, you can see how.
Oh, yeah. So would you replace the lights at the softball field or keep?
What's there?
So there'll be, oh, died, LED lights.
Yeah, the, the softball field will get the turf infield and the home dugout, um, those are kind of the major items of the softball.
Okay.
Um, this, next picture shows the example of the turf infield. It actually has a turf outfield above. Um, but this is something, as far as I can see, is probably getting a little bit. Um, and then this is also showing how the softball concessions press box is looking directly behind home plate. And the VIP seats are right there, um, that can be sold, used for fundraising, um, and has good use of the.
And this is, you know, the softball wall is the same height of the booth side. There's six inches difference between the same side and the field.
So that's all that we were showing for the baseball softball golf. Um, if there's any questions, I can move on to soccer. Um, so at the soccer field, the existing conditions of the press box, um, again, there are many public restrooms, there's the orange porta-potties. And, um, there's a press box with concessions underneath and two decks. And our plan here is proposing removing one of the decks and adding just a single restroom for both male and females. Um, and then to basically match the width of the existing concessions press box that could be overhyped, so that if people are lined up, uh, waiting for the restrooms, there would be a little bit of a shade structure there to, um, cover them. And then, um, the concessions were showing adding handsake and drinking percy. And then there will be a renovation of the concessions in the press box as well.
And recently for adding the, uh, three-way sink, same sink, and now they can't serve hot foods, they can't do nacho cheese and chili. And then playing not the game chances of playing, so it's a add, since we're calling it over to the restroom, just helping, allowing, uh, to allow them an opportunity, the luxury of selling their hot food over the years as well.
That's all that we have. If there's any more questions, I can go back to the site plan or, or anything else.
Restrooms at the soccer field would be a single surface, right? Single.
Do you have the picture of the concession stand? Yeah, it would be, it would be on the left side.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was.
Uh, you could tear down that, that.
Yeah, we'd have to go away on the left side to, the, you can't put restrooms underneath that, so it would, it'd go away.
And so the restrooms would only be a one?
Yes, yeah, so a one-story addition to the existing press box.
I'd like to see a lot of footrests in there, but maybe we don't have a room for it.
You know, it's small.
Yeah.
Both of us have the idea to combine.
Yes, so the, the plan that we're showing here, this is a ADA, um, sized restroom, so someone in a wheelchair could go in and turn around. Um, so it would meet those ADA requirements. But it is a single person restroom.
Any further questions or discussion? What is your recommendation?
Well, you know, you know how I feel about the porta-potties. But, uh, to have, to have, of course, not baseball, or like the last board meeting is one of the best. And, uh, it's, it's really, really good over the years. And, uh, you know, we built it in high school, we didn't have any athletic facilities whatsoever on a school property, you know, everything down, down town. And, you know, baseball, put baseball there on site. If you look at our, now it's small, it's got an uphill. That's one of the first things I noticed when I came to, to Rocher County to tour it, is looking, you know, no uphill in the outfield, work our baseball. And we are laying strap in our baseball field right now, you cannot make a better lecture, you can't make a concession stand, you can't do anything because you've got a road. And, uh, we have the middle school outfield, and we've got the tennis courts on the first base.
We, we have missed, I know of one, regional tournament that we've missed because our baseball field wasn't aligned to regulations as it has to be. And it was because of the distance between home plate and backstop, is what it was. And we just don't have any place to go in that, I don't mind it.
Somebody asked if we got parking, you know, maybe over there, now you can have those big tournaments, you can use all parking, and we got the gym in front of the swim pool in high school.
Regional tournaments in baseball would bring in, if you, if you could host one, which, right now, we're just, it's impossible for us to host one right now.
Yes, and, uh, baseball team did, uh, like fundraising tournaments, they're active somewhere. And they're not going to get rained out unless it's, it's original downpour, so.
I believe we look to the finance and I believe we can afford it, and this would give our, our student athletes something to be proud of, our community, something to be proud of over the years to come. You know, and so I think, you know, it gives me two great projects, including, you know, you heard we talked about the new elementary school, hopefully coming shortly. So we talked about an exciting time for, for the community of Rocher County, just getting new buildings and athletic facilities. Um, and maybe one day down the road, having a middle school, um, you know, we get the bottom desk and I, I think it's, it'd be great. Uh, like I said, for thousands of kids to enjoy it over the next, many, many years.
I don't, I know we have to park in the gym, if, of, of, that, but there may be discussion. But we're talking about.
Closer. You know, one thing about, you know, when you have these facilities, you gotta, you know, make a little money on the day proceeds, make profishes. So, so on this, to the right of the, um, the golf driving range, there's that nice flat grass field. So as long as you keep everybody coming in that sidewalk kind that you can see there, uh, you can have people parking at the grass. Or, of course, the big parking lot you can see there. So the grass would put you closer. Uh, what you don't want is people coming in from the backside of the softball field where you don't have any control over your gates, uh, and who comes in. So, and eventually down below, if we ever thought, we needed to pave that grass cooler there for parking for golf, baseball, and softball, that'd be probably something we look at in the future.
I don't mind it, just people parking at the high school. If, if you go to East Jesuit, if you go to watch softball, you're walking, I don't know, I mean, it's half a mile, I mean, literally. So, that's not that far for us.
Any other questions or discussion? We have two things, uh, to consider here. Uh, the first thing would be the soccer press box addition and renovation project. Uh, do you have a recommendation on the first one?
Well, there, there are two different projects, one of which is under a billion dollars, so can we estimate, they estimate it to be about $200,000 to do the soccer project. Uh, since that is under a billion, then you all could, you know, go ahead and, and hire the architects, and they can move forward with that process.
Any discussion? Okay, if we have no further discussion, uh, can I get a motion, uh, first of all, for approval of the BG one, uh, in relation to the Mercer County Soccer Press Box Addition, Renovation Project? And approval to hire Ross Tarrant Architects as the architect of record for this project?
Right there.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery makes that motion, round it to second for us.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Prue, second, we give the roll call up.
District one, Amber Franceschi?
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager?
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Hood?
Yes.
District five, Randy Gills?
Yes.
Okay, and next, we would, uh, need a motion, and we have no further discussion, about the baseball and softball complex. We would need a motion for approval of the BG one for the baseball and softball complex. And permission for the superintendent and our finance officer to receive letters of interest, mainly because of the cost of this project.
Yeah, so, um, now we're over the billion dollar mark that I talked about. So anytime you're over the billion dollar mark, and of course you got to a letter of interest, but for what architect firm would be, you know, willing to take this on and then move forward from that? So this is over a million, like 2.9 million dollars to do all this softball, golf, and baseball. So this would be, like you said, a letter of interest, but what architect firm would be willing to take on this project?
Uh, so no further discussion, uh, may I have a motion for, uh, Mr. Hoover and Ms. Byner to start, uh, receiving letters of interest from architect firms for this project?
I'm making my.
Mrs. Franceschi makes a motion, round it to second. Mr. Montgomery with a second, can roll call this as well.
District one, Amber Franceschi?
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager?
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Hood?
Yes.
District five, Randy Gills?
Yes.
I would like to say thank you, they've spent a lot of hours on this, helping us out with this and, uh, and I know they, uh, it's unbeating, but that's going on a lot of this, so thank you for all you did for us.
Very good presentation, you know, it was great.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. We would work with you often.
Absolutely. Uh, now for the businessman, please have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Montgomery, your motion. Okay, make sure we're holding your, okay. Mrs. Franceschi, the section.